To be a part of this community and we're excited about what God has in store for this great community. And as we pray, I want to just remember the Bogaz family as they are grieving the loss of their son Luke. So we'll pray for them and pray for this meeting this morning. Join me in prayer. Lord God, we thank you so much for this morning. I thank you for the leaders that are assembled in this room, Lord. And God, I pray that you would guide this meeting. We pray for your wisdom. We pray for your strategy. I pray that it would be a productive meeting this morning. And I thank you for this great community, Lord. And in the midst of all of that, Lord, we pray your comfort around the Bogaz family as they are mourning the loss of their son. I pray that you would be close to them in this time of grief and that you would be their comforter. And Lord, we ask all of these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
The pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Mayor Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Corey.
Here.
Councilmember Fullick.
Here.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick. Don't see him yet. Councilmember Bogaz is excused absence. We have a quorum?
Thank you. All right, public comment on agenda items.
That's not fair. You started it before I was ready. Good morning. My name's Jim Bradford. I'm with the San Carlos Estates Water Control District. I'm the chairman of the Board of Supervisors. I'm here today about Botana's proposed bill converting the San Carlos Estates Water Control District into a dependent district of the city of Bonita Springs. I have provided the city council with a letter that everybody should have had and we want to make that part of the public record. Botana's bill will, anyway, that was, and we're going to ask for the city's support in killing this bill before it becomes, as it's been forwarded to the legislator in Tallahassee Legislative Meeting in Tallahassee, but in the fall it will come back as a vote for both the city and the water district. If you're not familiar with that, of what's going on as of yet, you know, I said you got the letter. The district has been in existence as an independent water district since 1969. The district has continuously provided all of the water control district services, landowners of the San Carlos Estates Water Control District since the district's water control structures and roadways were constructed by San Carlos Estates. Only district landowners assess revenue has been used to construct, maintain the district's water control structures and roads. The district is debt-free at this time.
Sir, I'm sorry, sir. What is your name?
Oh, I didn't give you that? My true apologies. Jim Bradford. I'm the chairman of the board of the San Carlos Estates Water Control District.
Sorry, did you catch that? I'm sorry, okay.
Got a little watching your clock there to begin with as I walked up here. Sorry about that.
Okay.
We believe that we can continue to perform the services better than the city can because we have the involvement of our people and stuff within our community and they stay involved in the water district. No landowner in the district and no one from the city has been contacted by what we call a representative who should be talking to the people. And that hasn't happened. The city hasn't notified us, so we assume you guys weren't notified by them either. And they moved this bill last week forwarding it to Tallahassee. Personally, I was really surprised when that happened. Our district is a dependent district of the city. I take that back. The, we don't want to be a dependent district of the city. I am opposed to the district being converted into a dependent district of the city and I am opposed to Representative Botana's proposed bill being passed. Please do not support Representative Botana's proposed bill. Thank you. Jim Bradford, San Carlos Estates Water Control District. And from the number of phone calls I've had and other people have contacted us, I believe we highly support the people of the district also. We've also been here since 1969. We've continuously maintained our district through hurricanes, storms, et cetera. We've cleaned them up. We've never had to ask the city, the state, the county for any assistance in doing that. We were proactive before the storms. We were proactive after the storms and the cleanups took place immediately without needing to call in any, especially after Ian, when everybody else was completely taxed to their limits. We managed to pull everything off and pull it together and paid all of our bills and we have reserve funding today, which is for emergency funding to take care of any other emergencies. Thank you very much for your time. You have a good day.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Deb Orton. I think you know me, president of Friends of Burt. I think the first thing, as I look at an empty chair, and it's going to be tough to keep my voice, is from Friends of Burt and the Board of Directors, we, our sympathies go out to the Bogaz family. As far as the agenda for today, I want to give you an update on the momentum that is going on in terms of funding for the Burt Trail. Yesterday, some of you actually watched that on for Collier County and Collier County did in fact approve matching funds. They approved unanimously, Collier County Board of Commissioners approved unanimously each of the items that the staff put forward. Doug Hadaway from Trust for Public Land did that presentation. I stayed as long as I could. We were there for eight hours waiting for our turn. I stayed as long as I could, but I went and covered Doug Hadaway on a different meeting so, and had to take off. But I do know that that was approved unanimously without really much comment and that is $900,000 in terms of matching funds. Those funds can be used to match any funding opportunity that comes up, whether that be the Raze Grant, the state legislative session and other grants that are coming up. So that was good news, plus the $5,000 for grant writing for the Raze Grant. All of that was approved. The other part of the legislative momentum, if you will, is a legislative strategy that includes seeking funds from the wildlife corridor at the state level. Yesterday, I sat in for Doug on a meeting with Live Wildly and others who are very much in favor of moving this forward at the state level. It will be presented to Senator Pasadomo's aides and Senator Pasadomo today and next week with Adam Botana. So those are, who will lead this charge for us. I guess my ask of you today is, as we meet these different challenges and momentum, is to ask you for, with the $5 million that you have so generously put forward, that you give staff the type of flexibility with those dollars that Astero and Collier County have done with their staff. So it doesn't have to be each time brought forward, but in fact could be used for the state legislative session, for the Raze Grant and for other funding opportunities as they come forward. I ask you, secondly, to agree to be a co-applicant with Astero on the federal infrastructure grant that is being put forward called the Raze Grant. I ask you, as I know staff will present to you today to approve the $5,000 contribution for the grant application, and that will be put before you today. Later, there will also be an opportunity for a memorandum of agreement among the three, and we hope soon four, with Lee County to work together, and that will come before you probably at the workshop and not today. And within that memorandum of agreement, we'll be asking for a task force that would meet really on an ad hoc basis as different issues come up. And I did that in four minutes. I didn't think I could. So, thank you very much for your continued support and I really do consider all of you colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Anyone else?
Good morning. My name is David Nadek. I'm talking about the San Carlos Estates Water Control District. I'm a landowner there. Just a couple things in perspective. I agree with Mr. Bradford about, I think overall the district does not want, would prefer to stay independent and that's my position as well. But at the same time, we want to, I've been, you can accuse me of being a squeaky wheel for the last three years and I'll tell you some of the things that I've, a couple of wheels I spun. I wanted to point out, you may know this, chapter 189 of the statutes is Uniform Special District Accountability Act. So that outlines the tools that various agencies and governments have to hold each other accountable. And Mr. Botana did what Mr. Botana does as a legislator. He wrote legislation. He was approached, and not by me, I have never spoken to him actually, and he wrote legislation to address this. Now I think, I don't know if you guys are going to address this, but my understanding is that this is nowhere near a done deal. So we get a say in it ourselves. If we say no, then it kind of stops. So, I'm not sure, Mr. Bradford is asking for your help. I'm not sure what you can do. So I've studied the statutes as well as I can. I'm a chemist, not a lawyer, but, so, I mean, just a couple highlights of chapter 189. The legislature created a dependent, well, let me go to the next one. When the, whether, one of the, one of the principles of accountability, looking for whether there was a less costly alternative of delivering service or services that would adequately provide the district residents with services provided by the district. So, to put it in context, 1969, the district was established. 1999, the city was established. So obviously, we're unincorporated apparently, part of this county, so it probably was quite essential. After 1999, there are other ways to provide services and I think whether we can do them better or not is a good argument, but I think that's just the context of all this. What you guys do have an interest in for sure is what are the risks? If we don't do our job in the district, what are your risks? And I would argue that it's flooding in the city at large. So if we don't clean our canals, then there is a risk to you guys. You really do need to look, make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. I will say after Storm Debbie this past year, I think it was Debbie, it wasn't a hurricane, it was just rainfall for several days. My property was flooded and it was kind of, it was kind of weird and so the canals were not draining at that point. So, I would just say there is, it was alarming to me. As far as less costly alternatives, our current budget has a legal budget of $118,000, accounting for $30,000, engineering for $166,000, and I can go down, but those don't seem to be efficient numbers. I benchmarked, I spent about a week, about a month ago, looking across all of the, I got a list of all the special districts, about 70 water control drainage districts in the state. We are off the charge in terms of those kinds of costs. So those are some of my concerns. Finally, the head scratchers. I think we're going to run out of time, but, is that it? Okay.
All right. Thank you.
I'm going to just provide this to the...
Okay.
Clerk. City clerk.
Hi, my name is John Kang. I'm a resident of San Carlos Estates. I've got some concerns. What is the driving force for the city to take over our district? And who's behind it? Is the city behind it? Is it residents? Nothing has been presented to the residents of what is going on as far as the city's intent of what they want to do there. Most of the people that live there, live there because they didn't want city government involved into their business. And believe me, I don't want somebody in West Terry voting what goes on in my backyard. I think we should have our own vote of what happens in our district. I don't know what the city's intent is. As far as, you know, David brings up the canal being cleaned. Well, he's one of the biggest problems in the district. He won't allow people onto his property to clean the canals or he stands there and intimidates them and makes the people go away. Well, that cost us a lot of money. And he's a big thorn, but we've been willing to work with him, but he's not willing to work with us. There's a gate across Tuck Lane and this has been going on for years. I've been there 25 years and this particular residence has been a problem for the last three owners, starting with Mr. Higgins. And something's got to change. Now, Adam Botano, we've invited him to the meetings. He's a no-show. I called Mr. Botano's office to have a meeting with him. I've got no response. Zero. And I know Adam for many years. I thought maybe I could sit down and talk to him and find out what was the driving force. No response. I sure would like you guys to really take another look at this. I know a lot of residents and they are not happy with the bill that has been presented. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Belinda Zivich, San Carlos Estates District. I'm not about the city taking over our district at all. And I think the biggest thing for me is that I don't want Strikeland opened. In the beginning, when we went from dirt roads to paved roads, the city of Bonita Springs did not want to be involved. As far as Mr. Botana is concerned, his driving force is several different things, with constituents coming to him and talking about how the board has handled certain things. As far as no response from Mr. Botana, I had two emails responded and I had a phone call from Mr. Botana himself personally yesterday. So he will respond. I'm not sure why he's not responding to others, but he did respond to me via two emails and a phone call. He met with John Salucci, who is part of our board, and he met with the engineer. That meeting was basically discussing budgetary, how the district was formed and how long we've been around and some of the issues that we have been having. After that meeting, Mr. Botana had a second meeting and basically was disrespected in some fashion by some things that were said by Mr. Salucci. And the meeting was abruptly ended. Mr. Botana then reached out again, asking for a meeting of our board. He will not come to our meeting. He asked for our board to go to their meeting, to have a meeting with him at his office. I think his basic bringing of this, that I can read between the lines, is that he is looking for our Board of Directors to act in the way that... is looking for our Board of Directors to act in the way that they need to be acting as a district for the water and the roads and the canals, not as, in some fashion, as an HOA. We don't have an HOA, we don't want an HOA, we don't need an HOA. What we need for our board to do is to take care of the residents of, of San Carlos Estates by handling our roads, by handling the swales, the drainage, those things that they are specifically assigned to take care of. I've lived out there for 33 years. If I had my way, I'd go back to dirt roads. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have to admit, Ben Harrington, President Fairwoods Home and Association. I'm hearing about this for the first time regarding San Carlos Estates Water Control District. So I'm going to apologize to the council that I have a lot of ignorance. I can only comment on what I've heard this morning. I just want to say this for the record. San Carlos Estates Water Control District abuts a section of Fairwoods community. I want to say, from my standpoint of being there over 20 years in my own community, they have been great neighbors. There's never been any issue between us that I'm aware of. I mean, there was something way at the beginning, we met and resolved a small, a small issue of somebody and neighbors, but that's a long story, and it goes back about 15, 16 years ago. I've always found them to be cooperative, and they do the job that they're supposed to. I have no idea what the background is by Mr. Botana or anybody else regarding this. But, you know, being from Maine, it's a very simple rule that we basically go by. If it ain't broke, please don't try to fix it.
Thank you, Ben. Anyone else? All right, moving on to Item 6. We have an introduction of the new Director of Operations of the Benita Assistance Office. Councilmember Folic.
Thanks, Mayor. Well, Mr. Spear is already at the podium. You can come back up, John. So just for those of you that don't know, there are several institutions in our city that have been incredibly important to the health and well-being of everyone, and one of them is the Benita Springs Assistance Office. Without going into any details, there have been some challenges in the past year, and before John makes his introduction, on behalf of council, I think we all want to thank you and your board for the work in keeping things going, John, and getting things back on track, because Benita Springs Assistance Office is incredibly important. So with that being said, I know you're here to introduce our new leader on site, and Kaylee Martin. So is Kaylee here?
Yes.
Good.
Could I say just a word or two here?
Well, if you must, John.
You told me I only had 10, so. Thank you for this opportunity to introduce Kaylee Martin. I would also like to introduce four out of our nine board members are here. Chris Reason recently joined our board. Arden McCurdy is our longtime treasurer and longtime board member, and our president is Darcy Eichenberg. And we've spent a lot of time together since last March, straightening the things out at the Associate, at the Assistance Office. No better group of people to work with. What we would like to do today is introduce you to Kaylee Martin. She's our Director of Operations, and all I can tell you, if she doesn't tell you, is whenever you're approached by somebody that has a social, social service need in Benita, just pick up the phone, call the Assistance Office, and if we can't help, we'll get you directed in the right place. So, but no further ado, Kaylee Martin.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Hi, everybody. I'm Kaylee Martin. I'm the new Director of Operations for Benita Springs Assistance Office. I'm familiar with some of you, but it's really great to meet everybody else today. So thank you so much for having me. Just a little bit of background on myself, I've been a Benita Springs resident for about eight years. Before I came into this role, I was with the David Lawrence Center down in Naples, and then I was with Lee Health. I've been working in social services for almost a little over 11 years now, particularly in the behavioral health world, mainly mental health and substance use treatment. And I very quickly found out that I'm a nerd, and I love policies and procedures, and was drawn to the operations side of the behavioral health world. When this opportunity came up with Benita Springs Assistance Office, I was very excited because, like I said, I've lived here for eight years. Within the first, first three months of living here, I said, I'm never leaving, and I'm never moving back. I'm now here with my husband, we have two young children, and we love this community. So the opportunity to work for an organization that, we're now coming up on our 45th anniversary, that's been serving the community, got me very excited. So, I'm really excited for the new chapter for our organization as well. We, our mission is that we provide support to any community member that's in an unexpected crisis. And I know many of you are familiar with the organization, but I'd still just like to touch briefly on it. We define a crisis as anything unexpected that happens to no fault of your own, so of course, it's things like COVID and the hurricanes, we will be there for that. But it's also those things that touch individuals, sort of on those daily life basis. I think we can all agree that right now, one of the biggest problems our community members are facing is the cost of living. I know myself personally, I've had a lot of friends that are nurses and teachers, and they've had to leave the Benita Springs area because they can't afford the cost of living anymore. And there's a lot of people here in our community working really hard that are living paycheck to paycheck. So when that unexpected crisis happens, like a car issue, right, you hit a nail in your tire, you have to replace the tire, for some people that are living paycheck to paycheck, that's a decision of, do I fix my tire? Do I pay my FPL bill? Do I put food on the table? So, that's just one example, but the services that we offer is, we have an emergency food pantry, and then we do emergency financial assistance. And the new thing that we, the new service that we've added onto our emergency financial assistance is short-term case management. So what that means is that if somebody is coming in and they need a financial gap bridged, on top of that, we're also going to sit down with that person, that community member, and create an action plan for them. So we can sort of find out the whole picture behind how we can help them even further. So whether that's connecting them with community resources, or giving them the tools so they can support themselves and not come back to us within a few months, we want to make sure that we don't just have transactional services with our community members, but transformational. So we've been collaborating and reconnecting with our community partners since I started working for the organization back in August, and plan on continue doing so. And I think it's just really important to get the word out there that we are here, we're located off of Burnwood Drive. Like John said, if anybody has a need, even if we cannot specifically help them within our office, we will make sure that they connect with the right resource or the right person so they can get the help that they need. I think that's enough for me. So, thank you again so much for having us this morning, we appreciate it.
Kaylee, before you leave the stand, would you give us the status of the food pantry?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. So, our emergency food pantry, we are a partner of Harry Chapin and Feeding America. We are open on a weekly basis, on Monday and Wednesday, from 12:00 PM to 2:00 PM, and any Lee County resident can access our food pantry. We also do a monthly senior care and share program with Harry Chapin. We have 70 senior citizen participants that are Benita residents that come and pick up a month's supply of food. So, okay?
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for taking this position, and thank you to the whole board. We appreciate everything you do, it's a, you fill a great need for our community, so thank you. Onto the consent agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right, motion second, roll call.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Any comments on consent agenda? All right, move on to number eight, public hearings.
This is a first reading of an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, amending the Benita Springs City Code, Chapter 10, Buildings and Building Regulations, and Chapter 24, Flood Hazard Reduction. To clarify and update definitions and regulations as necessary to remain in the National Flood Insurance Program as applied to existing, existing buildings, special flood hazard areas, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, and scrivener's errors in an effective date.
Good morning, council. John Dolmer gave us a preclude to be expecting this. This is a housekeeping of definitions to best serve our residents, especially as they are recovering from back-to-back hurricanes. It is updating a definition that has changed over time, that would negatively impact our residents and take them from a five-year cumulative total for substantial damage and substantial improvement. It would actually penalize them for a 10-year period at a 25%. So we do feel that that is overly cumbersome and does not fit our best needs.
Motion to move to second reading?
Second.
We're, we're just moving to second reading now, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, no need. Okay, any, any questions, comments? All right, we're good. Thank you. All right, Mayor and Councilmember items. Councilmember Corey.
Yes, you have in front of you an application to serve on the city of Benita Springs Technology Advisory Board of David Schellenberger. I've known David for many years as a member of our board of, of condominium board in Benita Bay. He's a very dedicated kind of technology guy. I think he would be a wonderful addition. He's met with Jim Kaufman, and they've had a wonderful meeting and sharing of ideas, and I would support David being added to the technology board.
Motion to second.
We have a motion and a second, and my understanding is the other person is no longer eligible, moved out of the city, so.
Moved out of the city.
Okay.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Aye.
All right, Councilmember Folic.
Well, I was hoping to have more news this morning, but basically, just an update is that there is no current move on behalf of the school board. There have been conversations and comments to the public that they are working with us. I did ask our council this morning, Mr. Rooney, if he had received any communication subsequent to our last meeting as far as a meeting of electeds, and the answer, I believe, again is no. Is that correct?
No, well, the answer is, they have, the school board has appointed former Estero Mayor Bill Ribble to be their liaison, and we're coordinating to get a date.
So we're still coordinating to get a date? So I'm going to reserve my comments at the present time. I know that demolition is informally scheduled for sometime in May, and at the present time, just so that the public's aware, and council that you're all aware, I think our only ask now, that is a legitimate ask, because the cost is not going to be anything substantial, is that they not use the terminology of a facsimile, meaning the drawings they gave us originally, that basically look kind of, sort of like our old building? If you talk to any architect or engineer, what we're asking for, the south side of the building, which represents what we see here, and in every picture that you have of our city, is that they just replicate the original facade on the south side. They can do it, we're, we're not talking millions of dollars here, we're probably talking less than $300,000 total in design changes, and that's all it is. At our luncheon, at Senator Pasadomo's luncheon last week, I did speak personally to Vanessa Chivano, Armor Parsons, and Sam Fisher, and they said they want to work with us. Mr. Fisher says that we are, actually, I misquoted him, I'm still waiting to hear back how we misquoted him, but at the present time, they have not given me any sort of contacts, and I've not heard from Bill Ribble, although I understand a lot of our electeds, along with Mr. Ribble, are up in Tallahassee or on their way back from Tallahassee today. That's all I have.
I had a, just a quick follow-up to that. If, if the council is in agreement with the approach that Councilman Folic reached, you did, you appointed him to speak at the school board meeting, I would ask for you to formally appoint him to be the liaison, to meet with the school board's liaison.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon. Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Item C, Councilmember Bogaz is not here today, so, it's, I know she put it on here, so that way, people in San Carlos Estates would have a chance to speak at council. I believe we're doing it again at the next meeting, too. I, I know it's not city initiated, so I can tell you that much, but I reserve talking about it more until Councilmember Bogaz is here, and we can, you know, hear her side of everything, and, because I think she's been meeting with people out there, too, so.
Mayor, I can confirm that she would like this to be an agenda item at the next council meeting as well, and she'd like to continue to facilitate discussions with the Board of Directors of the Water Management District and the community.
Okay, thank you. Laura?
Yeah, well, I agree completely with folks who came and spoke, and I, too, wonder, how did this get started? Who here asked for it to get started? And talked to Representative Botana? I mean, Jim gave a great introduction of, of why they're solid, good to go, and then John said, you know, we've, we're, we're, we don't want you people here. And Lynda put it, I think, I don't know if I got the names right, but very succinctly, we're doing fine, we didn't ask for this, and we don't need you, we need our board. That's right, San Carlos Park needs to clean up and clear up their own board issues. Benita Springs citizens do not need to get involved in another district's water maintaining, maintenance issues, or their board who, who controls it. They're grownups, they can deal with it. They've been doing it for over 30 years, and I think they're doing a good job. So, as Mr. Hirschman said, they're neighbors, they're good neighbors. We work everything out when we have an issue. And so, if Jamie comes up, there has to be answers with, how did it start? Why did it start? How many people in San Carlos Park are for it? How many people are for it in Benita Springs? What are the liabilities? How are we going to employ, are, are we getting new employees? How are we going to budget for this? It just says at the end, and Benita Springs will do this, and city council is going to be your new Board of Directors. Oh, what? I mean, that is just bizarre. And so, there are a whole bunch of questions. When I first read it, I was like, how did this pass? I'm a qual, I, I'm a registered voter, it wasn't on my ballot. What defines qualified voter? And, and Mr. Rooney said, a registered voter. So I'm like, oh, oh, this is just a proposed bill. I don't know. To me, waste of paper, waste of time, and there's a whole lot of issues that need to be answered before we can even vote or support it.
Mr. Mayor, again, just for our understanding, this was not a city initiative, correct?
Yeah, it was not city initiated. Jesse, you're next.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo that, you know, this was not city initiated, and I respect the autonomy of San Carlos Estates. Quite frankly, I appreciate it. I think it's, if, probably one of my favorite areas outside of District 2. The idea that you guys handle your own stuff and you don't want us, great. Honestly, and then, to be fully transparent, seeing all the drama that you guys have going on, I don't want it. So, that said, I think, you know, we have to have a discussion, but, you know, out of respect for Jamie, I would, I would love to hear what she has to say on this, and honestly, I'm going to follow her lead on this. This is her district, but my thoughts initially, you don't want it, after what I've seen, I'm pretty sure I don't want it. I, I respect the autonomy. You guys vote in Benita, you have Jamie. I think we're good where we're at, but, I think, as, we do need to be cautious to blow Botan out of the water as a council, in the sense that we're going to be asking him for a bunch of stuff very shortly. So, that said, just think about how, how we do it needs to be artful. We don't want to, we don't want to create waves with him over this. They apparently made waves with him over this, it hasn't gone well for them. I don't want to be in that vote either. So, that said, I think we wait for Jamie, and then we go from there. But, I appreciate everybody coming out and giving your side. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thanks. Moving on to city attorney items. Moving on to city attorney items.
I do not have any.
Nothing? Unprepared today?
He's been battling restaurant seating in Naples.
What?
He said, you've been dealing with restaurant seating in Naples.
I saw in the paper, yeah. Never again.
City manager?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. At this time, we have the presentation of the November financial report.
She's smiling, that's a good thing.
Let's see, hopefully IT will step out and get that loaded for us. There you go. Oh, look at that. Good morning. What we have before you today is a financial report that's for the first two months of our fiscal year. So we don't have a lot of data, but what we do see is trending as we had anticipated in our budget. Again, we take a lot of our budget revenue data from the state economist and their reports. So can you take down that little? This is our general fund revenue. This is a pie chart that is all of our regular recurring revenue. And as we've talked about each fiscal year, our first few months of the year, the majority of our real estate taxes, which are identified legally called ad valorem taxes, are collected. So people pay them early in order to get their discount. So November, we have collected a significant amount of our ad valorem revenue, and this trend will continue through March. March is the end of the discount period, so we see a lot of those revenues collected, and the majority of our other revenues are collected monthly, on a recurring basis, monthly. Let me get this, oops, this is not working, it's not moving forward. Let's see how I can do this now. Well, there we go. The next slide, what we, what we attempt to do for you all each month, so we can clearly identify trends, this is our general fund revenue slide, that's actually our regular recurring revenue. We show you current fiscal year-to-date as compared to the prior fiscal year-to-date. That's, again, we talked about ad valorem revenue, real estate tax revenues. Certain revenues are collected in certain periods of time, so we want to make sure where we are this year compared to last year. As you can see, most of our trends are somewhat positive. Franchise fees down there, a little below last year. Again, it's just, we actually have a month or so collections in these financial reports, so not concerning now, but we'll watch that each month as it goes forward. General fund expenditures, these are our regular recurring operating expenses. We compare current fiscal year-to-date to prior fiscal year-to-date, and as you can see there, there's some increases. Those are primarily, probably, consumer, excuse me, inflationary indexes or projects that we have budgeted that are coming forward this fiscal year. Again, we watch that each month in order to identify trends and make sure we stay within our budgetary constraints. Restricted revenues, these are revenues that are assessed to fund specific types of operations. The first line item there are building permit fees. Again, we compare it current fiscal year-to-date, prior fiscal year-to-date for trends. As you can see, building permit fees, we're a little behind last year, not significantly. That helps fund our building inspection and permitting operations. Stormwater, we have that. Our impact fees, our park impact fees and road impact fees, similar to the building permit fees, those are permit-driven. So when someone comes over to our building department to pull a permit to construct either a residence or another facility, a commercial building, industrial building, those are when those fees are paid. So we track those. As you can see, road impact fees, last year, we had a lot of collections in that, which is not typical, given where we are as a development, as a city. Our other items there are fairly consistent with prior year. Again, it's really early in the fiscal year. Cash balances. We fund most of our capital improvement programs with the pay-as-you-go. That means we accumulate these monies that are designated or budgeted and approved through our budget process to fund capital improvement projects. So we accumulate those funds, so these funds are sitting there, earning interest, and as we construct our, our projects and our capital improvement project, these funds will be used to fund those, and we do not have to borrow in that case, which is a very good thing. We show current fiscal year, excuse me, current month, and then we show two immediate prior years. That's in order for us to get a trend that we're accumulating the money for our capital improvement project, and again, this is populated in your budget, or we're spending our money for its intended purpose. And we give you all of our major categories there. As you can see, funds reserved for debt, the last segment of displays there on the graph, those are the monies that we have set aside to pay the remainder of our debt service for downtown. And then also, you'll hear later on today, we have our $2 million in that fund sitting there that's available for us to use as restricted by Florida statutes for disaster funding. That money is, is sitting there, it hasn't, we haven't had to utilize it yet, but we will talk about that. It's on an agenda item later today, but I did want to let you know that we have that money there, available to us. And that's it. If y'all have any questions?
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
What would life be if I didn't throw one at you, Lisa? But I know you prepare this well in advance, you do a lot of research, you always have, which is appreciated, but going forward in the new year, considering what is happening with the slowdown that we kind of, you and I talked about, we knew was coming, do you see a need for us to re-project what we think our revenues are going to be towards year's end?
We'll watch for that, and you all know, the state economists, they do a great job. They do our quarterly estimating, revenue estimating conference, and throughout the year, they hit all of our major revenues statewide several times, and they update for those exact things that you're talking about. So we watch for their, they not only look at current year collection trends, which will look to their data and our collection to see if we need to do that. We're not hearing any signals that that's going to happen this fiscal year. I have a feeling, and we'll, we'll, we'll yet to be determined, but as we move forward this year, we'll gather the data, they'll make projections for next year. So in the prior year, it's the slowing down has occurred in the next year, but we will be watching it, and I, we bring you the updated information that the state provides us on a regular basis.
Thanks, Lisa.
Okay, you're welcome. Anything else?
Thank you. All right.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The next item I have is, we do have an official request from the Trust for Public Lands to participate in a grant application with the U.S. Department of Transportation, the RACE grant, and I believe yesterday, as it was stated there in the public comment, that the Collier County has also agreed to participate. The official ask is for $5,000 towards a consultant to assist with the grant application. The Village of Astero, I believe, is discussing that today or has already approved that as well, and Collier County did at this time, too. The application is for the southern portion of the trail. It is not for the entirety of the trail. Additionally, there's a request that we pledge the $5 million that we do have in the capital improvement project towards the grant. Any award of a grant application will require to come back to council for, sign on the contract by the, by Mayor and Council.
Motion to approve.
Oh, question? First. So the $5,000 is one question, is one ask, or are you asking for $5 million? Because we don't have $5,000, because we already committed 1.5 million.
So what I, what I would suggest, so it's similar to, as I believe the funding is for the Village of Astero, is you have an allotted amount in your CIP for the Sun Trail. Previously, there's been other grant applications that you've had authorization for staff and the mayor to sign on to forward for a pledge. Should you receive any of those grant applications, it requires you to come back to council before those funds can be committed. But, so yes, you've, you've pledged those before. The ask is for $5,000 at this time, which we have general consulting funds for, and to pledge the $5 million towards this grant application.
So what about the 1.5 we already pledged to another grant?
Correct. So if you are successful in any other grant that you've previously pledged for, that before those monies can be spent, they have to come back to council, and then we'd have to readdress what other pledges you had, or if you had get an additional award, you'd have to address if you, how we'd like to address that in the future.
Right. Motion to second.
All right. Roll call? Or any other questions first?
And I want to clarify that the city would be a co-applicant with the Village of Astero. Collier County staff has shared that they are currently in a grant application for this specific grant and are eligible to be a co-applicant.
So they're competing against?
No, they, they currently have a grant, and so they can't start a new grant in the, they can't be an applicant in the new grant if they have a current grant contract. But they are supportive, I understand, as of yesterday of the, of this application, and have pledged a match, and have pledged $5,000 towards a consultant as well. Additionally, Burt has committed $5,000. So the Friends of Burt has committed $5,000, TPL, Village of Astero, and now Collier County as of yesterday.
Whatever we need to do to get this moving forward, so. Roll call.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Thank you. Community Development Director John Dahmer will come forward with an update on community development regarding hurricane, the hurricane permit fee waivers. We wanted to reiterate that that is complete at the end of this month and to provide you with a quick update.
Stealing all my thunder. Good morning, council. In your packet today, you'll see that there's several pieces of information. There's permit data, there's hurricane fee waiver information, and also some office activity as well. In terms of the permits that you see coming in the office, what you'll see is a general flexorization with what we would consider normal. Some of them are higher month-over-month, some of them are a little bit lower, but they've stayed pretty consistent. Another thing you're going to see in there is our activity with the public has unexpectedly gone up. Season has arrived, and all of our northern friends are here, so they've been calling and stopping by to say hello. So you'll see those phone calls and email activity increasing. The third thing in there is what the city manager has just outlined. There is hurricane permit fee waiver information. To date, you have waived almost $1 million in fees. Those fee waivers will all come to an end January 31st, so if you have not filed your permit by then, you will not get your fee waiver. So as another public service announcement, if you're planning to file, this would be a good time to do that, so. I don't know if there's any questions or, or comments, but.
Great.
Questions?
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
And we do have some increased zoning activity for your next meeting, so make sure you all have a good lunch and bring some snacks.
Maybe wear pajamas, so.
For me, for Josh.
All right.
Thank you. The last hurricane recovery item we have is regarding the Florida Department of Commerce local government emergency bridge loan, and we're looking, seeking some direction.
Good morning again. We are a participant in the Florida Department of Commerce emergency, local government emergency bridge loan, as are a lot of other local governments in our area. The state created this program by Florida statute to loan money for emergency operations to a lot of the local governments that were impacted by Ian. We did receive that money. As, as is outlined in your green sheet, we received $2 million, and we, we have it interest-free. We haven't had to utilize it yet, but the state has approached us and every other participant in this program to offer an extension of the interest-free period. I, I understand that is driven by the fact that this money is to help somewhat, to help local governments be able to respond to a natural disaster when they're still rebuilding. A lot of the local entities, a lot of their structures are not on the tax rolls, things of that nature. So we believe that's why this program is being extended. We wanted to bring that to you all. Please be clear that we have not spent the money, it's in the bank. We do have it budgeted to be repaid prior to the end of the interest-free period. It should be stated that if we should go beyond the interest-free period, the interest is 10%. We have, based on direction we received by council, we do not intend to do that. So if, if your direction is not to accept this extension, we would pay it off within the period, but if you accept the extension, we would move it out in your budget to be paid, and it would stay in the bank, available for disaster operation recovery only. I don't know if, if Arlene has anything she wanted to add or not.
No, I think we'd like direction from you off. You'd like us to take advantage of the opportunity to extend it interest-free and schedule it within your CIP, but we would need a, we would need a motion from council.
Chris?
No, but not on this.
Oh, right. It is interest-free or it's 10% after the year?
No, it's interest-free. Our interest-free period currently expires December 1st, 2025. They're offering to extend that to October 3rd, 2033. So roughly eight years interest-free, they're extending it for us, just so that local governments have additional disaster and emergency funds available to respond.
There's a line in there that says every year after it will be 10%. Every year after.
After October 3rd, 2020.
33. If council chooses to extend it, it would be another tool in the toolbox for.
Why would we not? There's no, can anyone give any?
It's an equity line with no interest and no administrative fees, correct? That's sitting in our bank account. That would be stupid to turn down.
Yes, agreed.
Lisa's not going to say we're stupid, but.
We would highly recommend that you provide all tools in the toolbox for recovery.
All tools, given.
Motion to approve. Motion to second. Roll call.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Additionally, just one last item regarding hurricane recovery. We have been in contact with FEMA recently. They have advised us that they will be traveling to our community this week, and they will begin review of Hurricane Milton permits and projects. Community development staff is prepared and, and aware, and we welcome the, our books to be fully open to FEMA for that process. We did discuss an additional trip to Tallahassee. We have been speaking to our legislative folks, and there are committee weeks coming up that would be prior to session. There are some in January and February, Week Five, February 10th through the 14th. That was a suggestion by Hayden and staff. I didn't know if that work, week worked, but there's additional dates at the end of January 27th through 30th, February 3rd through the 7th, and February 17th through the 21st, but a good midpoint was February 10th through the 14th. If you would like, Jane can start reaching out to everybody. We suggested maybe two days, didn't know if, any, any time within that week if you wanted to travel up on a Sunday, Sun, Monday, and Tuesday there and come back on Tuesday, or this would be in addition to the trip that during actual session would be planned with the Florida League of Cities, whoever would like to participate in that. But we had, we had been asked to look at committee time so that you could fully have an opportunity to engage with the legislature before they were in session to give updates on our projects.
I think February 10th would be a great week.
Okay. So we'll work with Trevor and Hayden's office and Jane, and we'll start reaching out and see what works best for everyone's travel and move from there.
All right. If I may, we, Benita Grand Drive north of East Terry Street is becoming a city road as part of the, the agreement with the mine settlement. They will be, starting to install water lines and ultimately working on the, the road improvements there in the upcoming months. The, the water line, I think, is going to be the lead activity that we're going to see probably within the month or early February, and then from there, as their schedule progresses, we'll start to see the road work.
Did you have another comment here?
And then just on behalf of the staff, we just wanted to share with anyone that our thoughts and prayers are with Councilwoman Bogaz and her family at this time.
Now, Chris?
Yeah, just a couple of things. If you could give an update on where we are with the signage project for the city, is that?
Yes, no problem. As you may recall, sir, the, the contract we awarded was for design of two signed projects. One was Logan Boulevard, and the other were the beach accesses. Logan Boulevard's moved a little quicker than the, the beach access piece because it had the traffic monitoring technology in it, but we're right now going through some material review with the folks that created the plan versus some alternatives that the contractor is seeing might be viable. And I think, you know, here shortly, we'll be talking about a construction contract for Logan, and then the beaches will follow probably sometime a little bit later.
How about downtown? How about downtown?
We were never received direction to do anything with the downtown. The first two projects were Logan and the beaches.
How do we go ahead and get the project started for downtown?
Ask us, and we can solicit some pricing.
I'll make a motion that we start a project for downtown.
Are there other signs besides?
The signs are going to, you know, the discussion back at the time, we received the direction of the first two is, you know, what's easier, what's more complicated, but yet has a need, like the beaches. Each sign is a little different. If you start directing us to put signs on US 41 and the interstate, they will take quite a bit of coordination with FDOT and Bogastown. The downtown area, if that's, you know, what the direction is, I think we can probably work through that fairly simply.
I think one of the things we would do during each of the individual strategic workshops we do on the priorities, we talked about giving you an update on stormwater, transportation. This was one of those projects we discussed, where you all provide us with priorities, and then we can make recommendations on the next steps, but yes, downtown would be one. I think we wanted to look at with the project of East Terry, what we incorporate on the bridge, because that's also another project as well, of East Terry over the interstate, so what direction we have to work within that scope of that project. So, I think that would be something we providing updates on those maps, and then you providing us priorities within each of those, because some of them do take longer with permitting.
And can you give me an update on the Banyan Tree lot?
Yes. Jane should be reaching out to each of you to schedule meetings to show a brief, brief meetings, rendering of what we've come up with in terms of concepts, and then at that point, assuming there's consensus, we would bring it to council just for public viewing, and then the contractor will work on a construction price that we'll bring back to you to construct.
And the Lyles Hotel, Good Bread building, that whole area?
I can't speak to those, I can speak to the Banyan Tree, which we have rendered out in a kind of a video concept that we'll be presenting to you.
And finally, if John could give us a brief update on where things stand with BSU and the flow charting of the process for permitting and so forth?
Good morning again. I know when you initially reached out, it was almost as if you put a thought out into the universe, because Andy Keeble had immediately responded with some of the information for the flow chart. We're going to be working with him to incorporate that into our flow chart and get that posted on the website. Additionally, this morning, he also sent a list of all areas that he felt that the standards from Benita Springs Utilities differed from that of the building code for the state of Florida, and so I just asked him to give me a day or two to go through that list, and we'll get back with him on it. So, hopefully, in very short order, we will have both of those items either on our website, or we'll be working through those issues with BSU.
Thank you, John.
Anything else, Chris?
No. Nigel's got it.
I wanted to go back to the signs, Matt. Just remember, after Ian, one of the issues was the fact that manufacturer material costs were slowing things down depending on the size and where the signs located. Is there anything, any improvement on that? Can you give us?
I can't. What I can tell you is, we've been working on, you know, the first ones, you have a palette of materials that were kind of loosely specked in the plan, and they're, the contractor is looking at that palette and going, well, we think there might be some material alternatives that may be a little, a little easier to get your hands on or to work with, and that's good, that's part of the process, but, you know, there's a reason, usually when a designer specs a specific name brand, it gives you pause, and so what the direction has been is for the contractor to work with the people that originated the plan to make sure that this, you know, potential alternative may work. If that works, we'll be moving much quicker with the Logan sign, and then obviously, that material palette translates to all of these other signs, like the beaches and the downtown.
So, if you put the three different projects in order, which is the easiest to?
Logan.
Logan, okay. And then?
You know, depending on what we do with the downtown, that might be easier, although that's new. Probably the most complicated are the beaches, which we're already working on, and the complication there is twofold. One, we incorporated the technology to show you, for lack of a better term, whether there's vacancy or no vacancy at all of these beach accesses for safety, and then, secondly, we have to work with Lee County. Those are primarily Lee County facilities, and that piece, we haven't, we've talked at our level about it, but we really haven't talked to the folks with boots on the ground, and usually when you do that, it gets a little more complicated.
Thank you.
Thanks. And there was a motion to second on doing the downtown signs, so. Rule call?
They're going to come back to us, and we'll do it at the workshop.
We'll get a, I'll get a proposal very similar.
We do need a motion, because right now, the direction was just Logan and the beach, so there's going to be funds funded out of that line item.
Yeah. Rule call?
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
All right. Mayor and councilmember reports. Jim?
Yes, two items. One, first, I apologize for my delay in getting here today. I just got detained by an unforeseen situation, but again, my apologies to council and the public. Two, last weekend, I received a number of inquiries regarding the road condition in front of Midtown, where they're realigning the lanes, and for the purposes of those traveling east of 75 on Benita Beach Road, I did reach out to the county, and that unevenness in the paving should be completed within the next two weeks, beginning of February, so, just for the record.
Nigel?
Yeah, three things. One, I don't have a report for, from TDC, because the meeting's tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock, so I'll have a report for our next meeting. I do anticipate or hope that they'll come up with a more practical version of what they think revenues are going to be, considering that hotel revenues are definitely down. The money flow's going to get tight this year, and I want us to make sure that we're aware that it's going to get a little bit worse before it gets better. On a very positive note, because I don't want to be chicken little again, I received a telephone call, very complimentary call, on our mayor. I was asked to do a presentation to the Rotary and wasn't able to do it, so the mayor was kind enough to step in, and this is a quote, which I won't forget for a long time, especially if I get mad at you sometimes, I'll have to remember. They said it was the most comprehensive, down-to-earth, objective presentation they'd ever heard from an elected official, and the gentleman that said that to me was a lawyer, one of your people, Derek.
One of those.
But representing us that way, and to have people come back and be so positive, so thank you, Mike, it's the breath of fresh air after four years.
Thank you. He hates public speaking, that's the great part.
I know.
One of the things, you know, Deb Orton and I have talked a lot over the intervening weeks since our last meeting, and one of the things I'd like to take up when we get together for a workshop is how we can maybe be a little more nimble in terms of working together with Astero and Collier County, and the amount, you know, the level of authority we could give Arlene to make certain things without waiting for the next council meeting, make certain decisions without waiting for the next council meeting to happen. I get the impression that perhaps Astero is a little more nimble in terms of the amount of authority that they invest in their city manager, Steve Sarkozy, to act on behalf of the overall policy that their council has made. So, you know, I just want to get it, want, just to have that as a discussion topic at the next workshop. Second of all, there's a major fundraiser for the Wonder Gardens on 13th of February. Nicole and I attended the board meeting on Tuesday with the Wonder Gardens Board. There's a lot of activities there, new exhibits with the birds that were taken from the Shell Factory, and a lot of cleanup's been done. The Wonder Gardens is becoming a real pristine kind of place. The board's dedicated, they're doing, I think, all the right things. They have a new, they have a strategic plan, they have a fundraising director and so forth. There are, is a lot of money that's sort of sitting on the sidelines, waiting to make sure that everything's working out between the city and the Wonder Gardens, and the Wonder Gardens are taking those appropriate steps to be self-sufficient in raising their own internal monies. That money will be let loose when those donors are satisfied, and I think we're making a lot of progress. So, just wanted to report that I think that the Wonder Gardens Board and Neil Anderson, their director, is doing a great job.
Thank you, Chris. Laura?
Well, last night, the Fire Board Commissioners Hearing, a group of firefighters, 12, a team, competed against 100 other American fire companies to get a chance to go to Portugal to compete internationally, to who could get the quickest and the safest, you know, number of people out of a car at this, at one time, and the team came in 12th in the world, so that's pretty cool. They went to Portugal, thanks to Facebook, GoFundMe, and a few sponsors, and I'm very proud of our firefighters, so. And of course, you know. Deb, Jane?
Jesse?
Yeah, number one, as far as Chris was discussing, I am supportive of the Free Arlene movement, so whatever is handcuffing Arlene, you know, from our, from our standpoint, I'm open to, you know, uncuffing those restrictions. Also, I think, and it can be, it can be a workshop item, it doesn't need to be a green sheet unless you guys think it should be, but this is kind of, it's something we've pushed down the road for quite a long time, really just because it's always dicey, but I think it's something that we know needs to be discussed. I think we need to put Good Bread in the Good Bread Store building. We need to have a discussion of what we're going to do with that. That's not something we should continue to push down the road, and it may not be the most comfortable conversation. There may be some people who like what some of the options are, but I think our options are kind of limited, but I think this is one that we can rip the band off, Band-Aid off and figure out our next move, so maybe in a workshop or a green sheet, I'm open to whatever you guys think is best on that. And then last, just, you know, heart goes out to Jamie and her family, you know, there's just, there's really not a lot to say in a situation like that. I, there's, we have an ongoing thing with Jamie and I where we always, Jane leaves our packets outside, and I always try to get there first so I can go hide her packet somewhere, right? So, I like, put like little flowers on it, or I hide it up top, or I do all these things, and I found out like, I don't know, three, four months ago, that her son's been being the one picking it up. So, when I got there this weekend, the packet was still there. It hit, you know, so. My family really, my thoughts really go out to her and her family, and may they find peace in this very hard time.
Thank you, Jesse. Arlene, Lisa, and myself went up to the legislative delegation last week, and it was very interesting, it's my first time going, so I thought, you know, it'd be more of like a question-answer thing, but turns out, we had 90 seconds to make our case for our stuff, and so Arlene did a great job doing that. Then also, I was at the Fire District, they had their Phoenix Award Ceremony, so there was four groups that, you know, assisted in bringing somebody back to life, and, you know, they were all recognized for that. It was, you know, a very moving ceremony, and then, then they also did the presentation on the, I think it was the exfiltration team, that did get to compete worldwide and came in 12th, which is very amazing for Little Benita Springs, so, as someone here likes to call it, the greatest city in the world, so.
Greatest city in America.
But, you know, other than that, hearts and, you know, are all broken for the Bogaz family, and I know we're all here for them, whatever they need.
Oh, shit, sorry.
So, with that, just to keep them all in their prayers, in your prayers, thank you. Public comment on anything?
Ben Harrisonson, I'm just making up a lost time, so I need, I need more time at the microphone. Very quick, the intersection of Paradise and Shangri-La, it's a three-way stop, and the last couple of weeks, I don't know how many times I have seen cars whiz through heading east on Shangri-La. I'm just simply putting a word out there, maybe LCSO can perhaps monitor that unannounced to catch some of these characters. One of them was really something else, it was a huge truck, construction truck, and I know it's tough to, you know, stop these big things, whiz right through heading east, and one has to be very, very careful at that particular intersection. So, I think the best way, and I've seen it in the past, when LCSO comes out there, they do a pretty good job picking up these characters, and it's really a dangerous intersection, especially with the construction going on, you've got the high school, you know, coming out in the afternoon, and I just hope that that can be monitored a little bit and ticket some of these suckers, pretty serious violation, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, so a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
So, moved.[1775.83]